All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome all you on the move and those of you here in person to the January 16 Town of Pittkin Work Session. Uh, I'll just make a little statement here. This, uh, reason this is a work session is because, uh, Mr. Pete Olson has a a wealth of knowledge and information that some of the rest of us lack, and, and we requested that he share some of that with us. And, uh, he graciously agreed to do that. And, uh, we did not had not imagined at the time how many of the Board of Trustee members would want to, uh, be involved and hear what Pete has to say in person. And it turns out that we all did, so I'll just, um, remind everyone that anytime you have three or more trustees in the same location discussing town business, it has to be an official, uh, town meeting sort of thing, work session. So, that's why we're here. Uh, and that's why this is a, uh, public meeting. Uh, because there are, I think, has Ed Pinalto made it on yet? Okay, but we have Ramon and we have Jared and we have myself, so that's three, and so that makes it official town business. So, without, um, further ado, we have, uh, uh, for council discussion, and, and we requested some input from, uh, Mr. Pete Olson. Uh, Town of Pittkin Purchasing Guidelines. So, uh, this is going to be very informal, very easy. Um, I don't see any issues other than just the sharing of information. So, Pete, are you ready? Okay. You could come sit up here if you like. Talk right into the microphone, or I can hand you this one.
That's simpler, I'll sit there.
Okay, I'm happy to see. Yeah, get right up close to it, so.
Hey, I will try to get understood. Okay, um, as Mayor Pro Tem Gibbs alluded to, a couple of months ago, I guess, I sort of opened my big mouth. Uh, you were having a discussion about, uh, your resolution ordinance that, uh, provides guidelines for how various appointed commissioners should function. And you're having quite a bit of discussion about, you know, budget compliance and whatnot. And I piped up and said, well, there's really a pretty simple solution. And that would be if the town had some, you know, formal purchasing guidelines. Um, and I made the comment that I think it's a simple solution, and they had some simple guidelines that might solve the problem. Um, you all, I think, are aware of the attorney having weighed in recently. Um, Sarah and I talked about this last week, and she was able to get some input, so there are a couple of issues we do need to clarify. However, let me, before we get into the weeds, so to speak, um, kind of review the approach I took in presenting this. Um, there's been a lot of discussion in the community about the need for an appreciation, appreciation of volunteer being in the various commissioner positions. And, uh, while on the one hand, we want to be sure that, that they're operating efficiently and simply, uh, there are probably some basic guidelines that would be good for them to follow. However, we don't want to make those guidelines so cumbersome that every time they turn around to try to do something within their commissioner responsibilities, there's a need for them to call a special meeting or whatever. So I've tried to take the approach that there are some parameters that if they are followed, the commissioners are then authorized to proceed within their budget framework to do those things. Um, and I think that the last item in this document, paragraph F, might be the most important going forward. And I'll read that for those that aren't familiar. It says, "To aid in compliance with these purchasing guidelines, Commissioner Budget Requests should provide expenditure proposals with cost estimates as part of the annual budget report." So, for example, um, when a I think your Parks Commissioner this last year submitted a budget request and identified, I think specifically, some equipment updates and some, some of those types of things. And it would be my opinion that if those particular projects are discussed during the budget preparation process, and then if they do comply with the guidelines in this purchasing policy, that commissioner should be empowered to move forward without having to come back to the council for further discussion. By the same token, if something arises that is not included in the purchasing, or in the budget, excuse me. If something arises that was not specifically discussed during the budget process, then I think it would be appropriate for the commissioner to have some sort of a process of discussing potential expenditure with the town council. So that's what, what this, how this is laid out. Um, I do think that, you know, there's a couple of curveballs here based upon what the attorney said, but I think they can be simply addressed, or we can make it more complicated and address them in a more detailed manner. I don't think that getting overburdening with details is necessarily advantageous. So, um, probably the thing to do is either we can go through this from top to bottom, or if you would rather have some discussion beforehand, whatever you feel is appropriate.
Well, I'm happy to listen to what you have to say. Okay, we have his nodding, so okay.
Okay. Much more understanding than my spouse. Um, okay, so this basically says that these guidelines are established to improve budget preparation and management. And it says that generally commissioners have purchasing authority provided the following guidelines are followed. Okay, so the first paragraph A talks about the commissioners may use the budget item, uh, budget for projects and expenditures specifically identified in the annual budget request. As I mentioned, that would, I think, perhaps maybe step up the need for the budget requests to maybe be a little bit more detailed or discussed in a little bit more detail. Now, I will give the example, if I may, of the street budget. Um, the last couple of years, I think under maintenance or something like that, there's been a budget item of a twenty or thirty thousand dollars. And that was arrived at, well, we spent this much last year, so we probably ought to budget a similar amount. Well, that's all well and good, but if we have a purchasing policy, it would suggest that that twenty or thirty thousand dollars, which was vaguely described during the budget process, should not be utilized without consultation between the street commissioner and the town council. By the same token, in the street budget, there's such things as snow removal, which you go through a bid process anyway. Or some of the other items that are pretty routine maintenance, and they fall underneath some of these dollar values, it would be understood that the street commissioner would be authorized to proceed with those. But I think the, the main point there is that it would be better if during the budget process, there was a little bit more specificity in what some of the anticipated expenditures are. So, um, now, this draft provided that if project cost or expenditures were going to be greater than ten thousands, the commissioner needs to coordinate a bidding process. Well, now we've learned from the attorney, and this is where it gets a little weedy, that public improvement projects, if they exceed five thousand dollars, require competitive bidding. And I do think that this is something that may need to be discussed a little bit further with the attorney, because, for example, maintenance of the streets, for example, or putting new, uh, sawdust down around the playgrounds, that's
You can burn ten grand real quick.
Well, but it's not, isn't a public improvement. I mean, a public improvement, by some definitions, is a, a permanent fixture to real estate, or some, or, or streaks, term, gutter, storm drainings, those sorts of things. But is putting gravel down, is routine maintenance considered? So, um, I think that this paragraph A could possibly be amended to say that public improvement projects costing greater than five thousand dollars require competitive bids. However, if project up to ten thou, I mean, you know, that's something I think we may need a little bit more direction from the attorney. Um, and then the second item in paragraph A talks about minimum of two price quotes uh, when project expenditures are between certain dollar amounts. Um, and if we go with the five thousand dollars, it would have to be anything between a couple thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, those expenditures, you know, should be have, have a couple of cost estimates. And then we throw the wrench in the works about however these requirements don't apply if there's a sole source provider. And, um, I think in some instances, I believe some of the materials you get, the, it's the mag chloride, I'm talking to the street commissioner here. Uh, that's, there's only like, only one provider in the region or something?
Yes.
Right, and, and so, so I, I'm thinking, you know, that's why I wonder if we needed to define sole source provider. Town Attorney certainly agrees that we should, and I, I have come up with the suggestion that a sole source provider um, is a supplier that provides, no, I don't know, let me see if I can say this. Sole source provider is the only supplier of a particular good or service available in Gunnison County, the Western Slope, um, something like that. I mean, again, we're trying to make it so that these commissioners can, it's just what my approach was, that they're empowered to get things done, because, you know, they've got short season to operate in or whatever. Um, but I think we need to satisfy the legalities too. So I think a couple of these things probably need to be reviewed with the attorney. Um, so then, getting past those specifics, then it says prior approval is required if any cost or expenditure will be more than ten percent over the amount identified in the budget request. And that's an arbitrary figure, you could put it twenty-five percent, or, you know, whatever, but, um, I think that you got a question?
Repeat that phrase, phrase again.
Well, okay, as it says here
Anything over ten percent
If
of the original budget request?
Okay, so if, if the commissioner puts in a two thousand dollar proposal to buy some new playground equipment. And under this policy, he would be allowed to do that, because he talked about it in the budget. And so he's going to do it, because it's within the framework of the purchasing policy. But if it turns out that the cost is going to be twenty, well, let's see, twenty-two hundred dollars, that's ten percent greater than, than that would, so, you know, that's I guess that's just a thing that needs to be considered.
So you're saying that you think it could be flexible?
Well
I want to choose a higher number?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, because this is your guideline, it's what, what you feel comfortable with. I, I think that statutorily, as I understand it, the only thing is on public improvement projects greater than five thousand dollars, a competitive bid is required. But then, you get into the weeds of, well, what is public improvement project? And I, you know, I think you, I think it would be in the best interest to minimize what is concluded in that definition for getting things done around here. So.
Pete, when they say competitive bid, you know, this isn't really my forte, so I'm a little ignorant here. And we've already addressed, uh, how limited we are in some areas here. When that says, uh, competitive bid, or, uh, what is it? Uh, that it's required, it, does that mean you have to put it out for bids, and then if you only get one bid, then
Yes, yes.
Single source?
Correct.
Oh, so it means you have to put it out for bids, though you know there's only one?
Minimally, I think you would have, uh, some sort of scope of work defined. Publish some sort of a notice that we're accepting bids through this, and so I think you did, you know, like, for example, with this snow plowing this past year, there is a more or less basic scope of services outline. And then, um, everybody has an opportunity to look at that and then submit bids, but that had to be advertised and then
Yeah.
You know, so in other words, um, there needs to be a form, there has to be a description of what's needed. And, you know, you know, competitive process, and, you know, when you get into really big projects, you're going to have bonding requirements and all sorts of things, but typically
So that's how you would know that that's a single source thing, if nobody but one person did?
Well, well, that, that would be true. In fact, if you recall, one of the kind of problems this fall, when you're talking about snow removal, was that the, I think the clerk who, by default, had to proceed to get some contract in place for snow removal, according to the adopted snow removal policy, that's supposed to be done in September. She proceeded to do that, and she, I think, talked to the town attorney, and he said, well, that's a sole source provider, nobody's bid on it for the last several years. And that would be a typical, you know, thing, but the problem was then there was some interest expressed that there were some others wanting to bid, so you did open it up, which was fine. But I mean, that's where you get into a little bit of a problem with what is a sole source provider. Um, so, um, but that paragraph A is probably the most cumbersome, probably the one filled with the most challenges for you to try to sort out exactly how you want to do it, and I do think that the town attorney may need to weigh in on that. And I apologize about that, because I know you were hoping to kind of get some of these things in place rather sooner than later, but I do think that's something to be sorted out. The rest of this draft proposal, um, it does address an unavoidable emergency, um, let's see, the if it's, if an emergency comes up that was not discussed during the budget, be likely the case, then that needs to be discussed by the Board of Trustees prior to any action. And then if it's approved, it would be subject to paragraph A. So Jesse would come in with a street thing that hadn't been discussed during the budget, but he needed to spend twenty-eight hundred dollars to buy a couple culverts. Um, one in the budget, he'd have to talk to you, but then after that, he could proceed within the framework by getting a couple of cost estimates, you know, bid the cost proposals, and then move forward without further action by the, the council. And then it says here, "The commissioners may expend up to a thousand to address any emergency situation." Um, so there has to be some latitude on these emergencies. Some things stop happen, and it's got to be taken care of. But if it gets, you know, that thousand dollars, again, is an arbitrary amount, you could send it a three thousand, or whatever. Um, but if it exceeds a certain amount, then perhaps the emergency should at least involve, as a minimum, the mayor. Or you may want to designate some other person to do that. And then incidental expenses related to just basic operations of the particular division, the commission is responsible up to five hundred dollars. You know, you just trust them to make good decisions and move forward. And then, paragraph E references your ordinance that identifies the commission responsibilities. And one thing I have a question about is I think the last, well, when you reviewed and adopted that ordinance, Ramon made a proposed amendment, and I think it has a little bit of bearing on what we're talking about.
And you may be referring to specifically what is included in the budget report, is that what? So, in the, the new commissioner's ordinance, um, the order goes, I believe, planned expenses for the next month, budget to date, or expenses to date, and then if there are any ongoing projects, the estimated amount to finalize the project. So all three of those things were to be included in the monthly budget report from each commissioner.
Well, that, I guess, the, maybe the advantage of that would be it might identify if there were any issues related to your purchasing guidelines, that, I don't know, so I don't think it really conflicts, because this wouldn't
Yeah, I don't think it would.
Okay. So, um, unfortunately, I may have raised more questions than answers for you, but, um, I do think that some basic guidelines would be advantageous and provide a little bit of, I guess, you know, safeguard for the commissioners, for the council, but I, I do think there's a couple sticky issues, particularly what is a public improvement and how that might affect the levels. You know, when Sarah and I talked, we thought that expenditures up to ten thousand dollars for typical operations, if they were discussed, described during the budget request, would be reasonable for the commission to be able to proceed. Now, I don't know, some of those amounts, they may bump up against what you're experiencing. Um, and if, if we can get the attorney to agree that they don't, they aren't considered public improvements, you could raise those limits some. So.
Well, thank you, Pete. Um, so I don't know what the cost of gravel is. I do know that, uh, last time I bought gravel, I was surprised. And, uh, delivery costs on gravel have gone up. And, uh, and so in the initial planning for, uh, what we're going to, what various, well, I'll take streets, because Jesse's sitting here. Uh, what amount of gravel is going to be required to maintain our streets? Well, I'd just guess real quick, um, we could go ten grand in a heartbeat. And, but if, but if that is presented in the initial budget request, um, and, and, you know, we've looked at like what, three places you can get bids from for gravel, and then farm your hauling out?
Well, I can get four truckers and two bits.
Yeah. So, um, we're, we're, we're not sole service providers, but man, we're getting close.
Well, mag chloride, I would say
No, mag, just, I understand.
Well, okay, let's take this example of the gravel that's going to cost twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. Okay. If the attorney will agree that that's not a public improvement, then competitive bidding is not required. Okay, so you could raise the limit in, in paragraph A1 up to you know, an amount that you think is appropriate, so that there wouldn't be a requirement under normal circumstances for competitive bidding, but it would require at least two written estimates. Now, for gravel, that would be possible, I think, to get a couple of cost estimates. But for mag chloride, obviously, that would maybe fit under the sole source provider. Now, is this mag chloride guy is even in Gunnison County, or?
He's in junction, I think. I think they
Well, you might say the Western Slope. I mean, you know, that's
It comes out of Grand Junction.
Yeah.
The two main, what I would call, these public improvements, if we redo the map on Main Street, for example, that ought to be the public improvement.
Whoa, yeah.
Yeah, septic and well system to our city hall.
Oh, yeah.
Those rules, I think, are undisputable, as long as they're public, uh, what's that word?
Improvement. Public, public improvement, yeah.
Yes, and, uh, the streets, like the gravel, is maintenance. Uh, mag chloride, we had one provider out of Grand Junction. And, um, or at least that's the one I've ever been able to get to respond to. So, uh, this we've talked our last main communication is the bottom line.
Right.
And so, uh, I while I have the floor, A1, the last line, I think, involving ought to be between the competitive bid process with the board of committee, the trustees. We don't want to bid against the trustees, but we need to involve the trustees in it. Is that a true?
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I hear, yeah.
That's just a comment of mine. And, uh, I, the three of A, ten percent, um, ten percent of the thirty thousand dollar budgets in one thing, ten percent of the twenty-five hundred dollar budgets in another thing.
Right. So I don't, well, okay, this, this three is talking about if, okay, yeah. Well, okay, so if you have a thirty thousand dollar project budget that was discussed during the budget process, and if it's not considered a public improvement, and you go about the process of doing that, and you come up with a cost of thirty-two thousand, well, my argument would be, well, that you go ahead and do that, because you're not exceeding the ten percent. I mean, so, I mean, that's the sort of latitude you want to build into this, so that people don't get hamstrung having to wait for the next council meeting, or call a special meeting, or whatever. So, you know, it seemed like this paragraph A, which I think is most critical, ideally, we would be able to put in a, you know, like one, or two, three, or say, I had four that says all public improvement projects costing greater than five thousand dollars are subject to competitive bidding, and that complies with what the attorney recommended. Provided he agrees that many of these other things aren't public improvements, and I think are, arguably, they are not. So, this, this is a misogynist.
Yes, okay. Um, so Sarah, did you pick up on those, like, basically three questions that we need to run past our attorney?
Yes, and I will reach out to him and get his input. Uh, I, just, just for, uh, moving this forward, I, I am not sure if it will be ready for a vote on Monday. But I will reach out to Clay, um, if I can get some clarification on those questions about what constitutes a public improvement, um, and the other questions, then I'll certainly email those out, but it may, it may be that the board needs to discuss this further. There may, Monday's agenda is quite
Quite full.
Heavy. Um, so, so this may or may not be ready for Monday. Um, another question I had, and, and not to create more complication than there needs to be, so I'm just seeking feedback here. Um, for example, so we have, um, project cost or expenditures. So, uh, in the course of streets and ditch work specifically, a lot of times there are ditch projects in various areas of the town. So for the purposes of following this, this procedure, would we consider cleaning the ditches regardless of how many separate locations, one job? Or would that be considered a multitude of different jobs, you know, five hundred dollars there, three hundred dollars there, two hundred dollars there? And then before you know it, we paid a single provider multiple thousands of dollars, and it did go out to bid, because it was submitted as multiple multiple projects. So, so my thought on that is initially, and just kind of running it through my mind, is that it goes back to budget planning and saying the estimate for ditch work to this year is X number of dollars. Not five hundred dollars at this location, a thousand dollars at this location, three hundred dollars at this, it should be considered one single project. And that way, the town, if it needs to, can put out to bid for a person or a business to do all the ditches, kind of like we did, I think it was this past summer. We sent out a bid, we had GVE come in, and they cleaned out all the ditches. And so And so that was considered, ditch cleaning was eight project. And then we, we did put out today, we didn't follow this procedure, obviously, because we didn't have it. Same thing with, you know, some of the things that kind of occur here and there. Well, Pete did a lot of this this last summer, but filling potholes. You know, he could spend an hour here, two hours there, six hours there, an hour and a half there, forty five minutes there. And before you know it, Pete's turning in a bill of five grand. And the town's like, whoa, wait a minute. Nobody else had a chance to bid to fill potholes than we should have because it's quite a expensive project. So so that's my thought. Just thinking about specifically the types of projects that we do in Pickett. Pickett is very consistent. We do not often have odd projects. We do the same things every year. We fill potholes, we do mag chloride, um we put gravel on streets and we clean out ditches, back in playgrounds. Every few years, we do mulch. And then they should, you have a different project, which is going to be fixing some of that roaming equipment, but that's taken care of. But by and large, we do the same things year after year. And so it seems that whoever is in those positions should be able to give a rough estimate on what's the project going to cost or, you know, if you're going to have somebody hired to come up once a month and fill all the potholes. And then we put it out as an RFP saying, hey, we're going to do a once a month pothole fill. Give us a bid on, on what it would cost us, for you to come up and do that. And that way, we are following our procedure, rather than, like I said, separating it out into multiple tiny projects, which all add up to several thousand dollars to pay to somebody who's not giving a bid to the town, when there are in fact multiple people and companies who can and might be interested in doing those types of projects.
Thank you. So how does that work? Because that's volunteer. I mean, we had uh machine reimbursement at a real cheap rate.
It is volunteer, but it's an expense. So I'm not talking volunteer, I'm not talking payment necessarily to a person. I'm talking about expense. It's still an expense to the town. So last year, for example, we paid volunteers upwards of seven thousand dollars for expense.
So was that for tractor reimbursement this year?
For very, yeah, yeah.
Which is at a real cheap rate and because there was no operator.
It's not here from there. It doesn't matter that we're paying an operator, we're paying for tractor, we're paying for diesel, we're paying for tires, it's expense. So from my perspective, we're talking about expense. And we're talking about a lot of expense. And, and moving forward, if we're going to adopt this policy, I, I think it's worth at least considering that if we have a type of project, instead of splitting it up and then kind of squirting around this policy, we need to consider it a single expense. And if we estimate that that expense is going to exceed the amounts in this policy, we should put it out to bid.
Yeah, then that should not at all be addressed for volunteer, our volunteer and our volunteer commissioner stuff. That would be a business expense. You, you know what I mean? We're talking about volunteers here.
We're talking about spending town money on, on anything.
Yeah. So I think it's, it should be a separate entity now.
No, it's the town's money, whether the town's paying for gas or whether the town's paying a company or whether the town is paying. This is how do volunteers spend money? The town's money. And so if we're spending money on a project, no matter how that money's broken down, the town is spending money. And so it would fall under this.
Well, I guess I would have to, at this point in my thinking, anyway, kind of disagree. I think we should put, put that, separate that out into a not like, that's not a volunteer thing then.
I'm not sure how.
Do you see what I'm?
No, I don't. That doesn't make sense. Sorry, hon.
I just, I, I'm trying to get it, you know, in my head.
Right.
Okay, but this time, back to potholes. Uh, so I was appreciative of Pete's effort. No, really. And I talked to Mitch. And uh the, the county uh uses what's called a cold pack. Now, they don't do a hot wrench anymore. And he said that uh that they had been um limited. Is not the word he used, but that's the impression I got, that there was not an adequate supply to fill all the potholes in the county. And uh the person that squealed the loudest got their pothole built. And they finally got up here and I, I really brag on him for doing this. They, they got up there before the snow and before that first big plow. And they got several potholes.
They did a good job. I called them and they said, we're actually on our way up right now. And I said, are you kidding?
So, so uh that might, uh, this, this cold pack business, this, this stuff comes in a sack. And uh we might ought to see about the stock.
Limited. It's a line.
We could get some of that living supply.
But the potholes aren't just on the paid part of the street.
No, no, but um other potholes. So, yeah. And typically, you don't just dump gravel in a pothole and hope it stays. You gotta.
Doesn't work. You keep dumping gravel into.
You gotta scap our things up and get it back in there and compact it with a little more than just gravel sometimes.
On the ditches is, I think, quite easy to get our bids. Because primarily, prior to opening the ditches, we clean them out. And not every ditch needs a mini excavator in it. And that varies from year to year, what happened the previous year. So our bidding for ditches for mini excavator to open up clothed ditches, I think is a single event. Once they're up and running, I don't see any problems uh needing to have the expensive application of pot. Uh, and the potholes in the town and the gravel on, on the gravel streets, like Pete says, is not just dumping three quarter road base in the hole and pray it stays till it won't bouncy right out. You gotta give it some tender loving care and work some soil into it, or add some moisture into it and pack it down and and then pray it stays. So whatever comes up, we did is fantastic. Uh, but the bidding process, again, let me look, we'll refer you to the road grader that uh lasts two or three years, two years, I believe, the county has done. And I know when Rick Pendy was here, we rented a road grader and a water truck from uh oh, my buddy down there at uh Indian Head Rock.
Arnie.
Arnie, yes, Arnie McQuirr. And my goodness, if you could do bids with Arnie, there is no need for bidding because it's too cheap. Uh, the other thing that I would like to ask, I know back up the road, Sarah contacted me about what tractor, what horsepower, what model that I have that I was using on city streets. And I would like to know what you found for a bid coming out of town as to who would lease us one of those tractors, please.
Are you asking me a question?
Yes, when you asked me what uh, what uh brand and model and horsepower tractor I was using that you were named to acquire a bid to shoot down.
What's your question?
What was the bid for town?
I, I didn't get a bid from town.
Oh, that, I understood that when you asked me what horsepower model uh tractor stuff I had.
I don't have an answer for that question. I did not get a bid from town.
Okay. Well, it's probably at least three times what you paid me.
So um I can say that uh Gunnison, Gunny Rents, I think is what it's called, um, had uh what they would consider a comparable machine, a skid steer. And to rent that for seven days plus insurance, um, and they would bring it out and take it back was less than the cost of paying for forty hours of tractor.
You're saying two thousand dollars?
Less than two thousand dollars. It was about eighteen hundred dollars. That may be different. This was last year. But it was, it was less. And, and it wouldn't be limited to using it for forty hours. It would be for however many hours you could use it in a week.
Seventy days.
Correct.
Well, I um, I want to thank you, Pete. For your time and your effort and your trouble. And uh we have several questions for the attorney and uh we have uh I think we're, we're on the right track for guidelines for our commissioners. And um for those of our commissioners who have been doing this for some time, um there should hopefully be enough track record out there in your memory or otherwise, um, to know what we have had to do in the past. And, and therefore looking forward to have uh some idea of what we have to expect in the future. And um, and then to put all of that together with rising costs and so forth. And so uh our uh on the one hand, Pete said, well, you know, we, we, we need to keep it simple. And on the other hand, it it keeps getting more complicated all by itself anyway.
Well, that, yeah, it does. Um, I guess, I guess what I would think ideally, if the attorney would agree that we specify that any public improvement project in excess of five thousand dollars requires competitive bidding. Statute requires that. We put that in the statement. And then we go back up to these paragraphs one and two, raise those limits.
I just need the recording because I don't have, I think it could take minutes.
Raise those limits in one and two up to whatever, you know, fifteen thousand on paragraph one. And then allow project, you know, up, if they're up to fifteen thousand dollars, they can get by with just getting written price, price quotes, provided they're not public improvements. But if they exceed fifteen thousand dollars, then we would coordinate a bidding process coordinated with the town council instead of with, with what Jesse said, clarify that statement.
Yeah.
But those are the sorts of things, I think, that it kind of depends on how the attorney or someone is. And then again, the sole source provider, that's kind of sticky, but I think you, I mean.
We live at the end of the road.
Right. That's right. And you know, within a reasonable distance or within a district slope or whatever, that, something like that needs to be.
Well, okay. Uh, anybody got anything else they want to add to this?
Question.
Uh, go ahead.
Uh, this deal we're working on with Pete, how are we going to relate that to ordinance seven, six, two, twenty four that lists our different commissioners and responsibilities within?
We're, it's going to take some coordination here to pull this together, Jesse. Um, which is, which is why we're working on this. And so it is obvious to me and I, I knew this before I said, uh, if Pete's going to share with us, then I want to be there. Just, just, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm apologizing. It's not simpler than that. But um again, if, if Sarah can find out whatever from the attorney, then if, if I can be of any help, let me know and and I'll be available. I'll be here for the next couple of months, hopefully.
Well, okay.
Barring any unforeseen aging issues.
Can I just hop on real quick? Uh, I just want to also uh extend thanks to Pete for putting this together. Um it saved me a lot of time. I'm very appreciative. I think, I think it is simple. I think it's going to stay simple with the addition of just a couple of definitions and some clarification. I'm, I'm highly optimistic that it's going to remain two pages or less, which I think is going to make it very easy for it to be implemented. And as a trainer, um, I'm just highly appreciative. So thank you, Pete.
My pleasure. And if I can provide assistance, it might be of value. I'm happy to do that. So.
Thank you. Yes, I, I've appreciated it.
So Pete, thank you very much. And unless we have any more input here or questions, thank you, sir.
You bet.
We will adjourn this meeting. Thank you so very much.